Everyone, good morning. Welcome to the Monterey County Planning Commission meeting of October the 29th, I believe. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Work, would you lead us, please?
That Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. May we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Hartzell are absent. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, is this time that you give the instructions? It is, in fact. All righty, Ms. Secretary, would you tell us how people who want to remotely access this group?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for joining. So if you are joining us remotely, either via computer or phone, we invite you to participate during the public comment portion of the day. You may, during those times, just a reminder, the link and information for today's Zoom is on the agenda and is on the screen in front of you. You can raise or lower your hand on the Zoom plat-- or on your landline by pressing star nine on your Zoom platform. Go to the bottom of your screen, to the icons button, and select Raise Hand and Lower Hand. Another way you can participate is sending an email. We do monitor the email, which is pchearingcomments@countyofmonterey.gov. We do monitor that during the meeting. However, now that the meeting started, there is no guarantee but that we will capture all public comment, but we're usually pretty good, so please feel free to send emails. Members of the public who do wish to comment during the public comment section will be granted permission when it is their turn by the clerk of the commission. At that time, you may mute or unmute yourself on the Zoom platform by selecting at the bottom of the screen the microphone button, which will mute or unmute you. And on your phone, it is star six to mute, star six to unmute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
We are also, sorry, I did sound like I was done. We are also happy to continue our live translation via pilot program with Wordly. On the screen in front of you is a QR code, or at the very bottom is the Internet page pathway that you can go to. Follow those to the Wordly's, to the Wordly and select your language. You will then receive live translation. Anyone here in chambers, we do have headphones for ability for live translation as well. Thank you very much. Now I am done.
Now it's my turn? Okay. Thank you. All right, it's now time, this has been set aside for public comments for items that are not on the current agenda, and in fact, we have one speaker slip for Mr. Fay. It's your time to shine.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Apparently, the only thing that will shine is the top of my forehead. The last time I was here, Sharon Parsons was the chair, and I believe the only remaining person from that group is Commissioner Deal. So nice to see you again. That was 25 years ago. Great memories. My concern is, back then, I had a citizens group, the River Road Concerned Citizens, and our campaign was safe, rural, scenic. We turned in several petitions to the Board of Supervisors during the general plan update back then. And recently, I attended a Berry Drive residence meeting arranged by Supervisor Daniels. And apparently Sacramento has legislation allowing up to 15 felons, recently reduced from Soladad Prison or other prisons, to just move anywhere willy-nilly without your oversight or local jurisdiction oversight. And I witnessed River Road strong like never before. The residents of River Road came out en masse and opposed this because there's no infrastructure out there. It just makes absolutely no sense to do something like that to a rural community. So I would hope that in the future, you could do something to change that. It was Senator Laird's staff that was there. He was an assemblyman back when I was involved 20 years ago. And somehow or another, this has happened at Sacramento, which is terrible. And I'd hope that you could lean in and find out more about it and prevent that from happening to us. And also, there is a solution to homelessness, mental illness, and become infelons in the first place, and that is the health care component. And I asked Supervisor Daniels and the Hearst representative if they were allowing functional medicine in our health care system to help these people that are struggling. And they said no. So again, when you're talking to your health department representatives or people involved with the homeless and mental illness, please ask about functional medicine. It is how you diagnose people and heal them. It's how you use food as medicine, and it's how you keep our communities safe. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your viewpoint. Are there any other members of the room? No? Saying none. Madam Clerk, anybody on the?
We have no additional emails or hands up on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving along then, we move along to Agenda additions, corrections, or deletions. Do we have any of those?
For the record, we've received and distributed additional correspondence for Agenda item number one, PLN 220088, The Ranch Club. Agenda item number two, PLN 200047, Amendment One, Newt, Michael, and Michelle. And Agenda item number three, PLN 220348, Omni Resources.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, it's now your time to request, refer, or make a comment. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you. I don't know if this needs to be a referral. I'm wondering if we can have, before the hardcore rainy weather sets in, somebody from Porth Mud to give us some sort of update on what's been going on with the levee. I know for a fact that some of the homeless encampments were actually digging into the levee and creating rooms into the levee system on the Monterey County side, obviously. One even stole an excavator from a friend of mine down the street and drove it down the road tracks to the levee and was excavating. So I wanted to make sure that those construction projects were being dealt with before the river got really high in the wintertime. And I know that there was some sort of official something happening out there, not a cleanup, but there was a skid steer and stuff out there. So I don't know if they were actually dealing with some of those things.
All righty. Ms. Secretary, can you help that lady with that?
Yeah, I think I may. We can always invite the Paharo Flood Management Agency to come and give a presentation. Our agendas are fairly full through the end of the year, so I'm not sure on the timing for that. I wanted to make sure, because I can also follow up, where staff is happy to also just follow up and flag some of the questions and concerns specifically, and just get a more direct response if they're aware of and if they're being addressed, if that would satisfy. And so I did want to make sure that I captured it. I did hear that there were some concerns with homeless individuals who were digging into the levee. And then there was a second one that I didn't quite catch, to write down, that there was some activity or something that I think you had a specific question on.
Oh, it was maybe like a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, there was actually some official project happening down there behind the car wash, and I don't know what they were doing. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll try, if it's acceptable, we'll just try to get direct comment and response on those in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. Other commissioners, anything? Anyone? Commissioner Gomez?
Just wanted to say, as many of you know, I work for San Marcos County. I give a staff to a supervisor that represents the Watsonville area. And we had a meeting, I know that Monterey County's talking about it, so just wanted to put it out there. We had a meeting about developing a local battery storage ordinance, county ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do. It provides local control, and I think that it's the right direction. And also, obviously, you know, it also, it also, you know, encourages, I don't think it forces, but it would encourage us, folks, to use the local process as opposed to the state process for battery projects.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Doesn't look like it.
I made sure to just provide a, just brief information. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors did hear a referral, new introduced referral from Supervisor Church requesting a moratorium on new batteries while we look in, while the county explore options for local regulation for the smaller types of battery storage. So I will definitely flag that for you and note, I believe the response will go back to the Board of Supervisors within 30 days in terms of a preliminary response from staff.
Yeah, the, just to respond, I think that concern that I would have is that, what would that mean if you have more term in terms of allowing existing facilities to make improvements to make them safer?
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we'll get involved in that if it comes, comes to it. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move along then to the scheduled matters, saying no one else. Our first matter, our first scheduled item on the agenda today is PLN number 220088, The Ranch Club, Inc. And staff, are you ready?
Yes, there, thank you, Chair Getzelman. Good morning, Planning Commission. Fiona Jensen presenting HCD planning file number PLN 220088, The Ranch Club, Inc. The project involves the installation of a driveway to allow community access to a redwood grove on an adjacent site within the Santa Lucia Preserve. The intention is to allow organized events, celebrations, and activities to be held on an adjacent property that has historically been used for such uses. Staff met with the applicant mid-October and requested that additional information be provided to clarify the scope of work that was just submitted to staff yesterday. Accordingly, staff recommends the Planning Commission continue this item to a date uncertain, and staff will return with a draft resolution reflecting the clarified project scope. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there, okay. Agent, I mean applicant?
Yeah, I think applicant.
Oh, wait a minute. Ms. Deal is going to help me out. Yes, please?
Thank you. I was, you were doing fine. I wasn't having anything to do with you. I have a question for staff, which is that the agendized item is about changing map boundaries on the final map, and it says it would to allow construction. So the actual project, as shown here, doesn't act, doesn't, isn't about the driveway, it's about the map. And so I'm wondering that when, if and when this comes back in a similar form, the Santa Lucia Preserve is not, does not use the same kinds of descriptions for zoning designations as other portions of any place in the world, as far as I know. So I'm hoping it would come with a translation. So each of the, if on any time we use one of the specialized descriptions of what's allowed and what's not allowed, we would, I would benefit from a reminder of what exactly that means. Because that was a question that came up to me when I was looking at the project description. Because we're not just looking at the driveway, we're looking at the subsequent potential for development that we might or might not be talking about when we change a map. So that was my request. So if that could happen when we come back, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other questions of staff? Saying none. Is the applicant or the applicant's agent care to make a presentation? Yes. Mr. Panzer.
Morning, Chair Getzelman. Members of the Commission, Joel Panzer with Maureen Ruck, Planning Consultants, representing The Ranch Club, Inc. Before today's hearing, I had a chance to speak with Ms. Jensen. Our concern would be, when you think about the phrase "to a date uncertain," it means there's no certainty. So we were hoping for a December date. Staff had thought about January. In speaking with Ms. Jensen today, I withdraw my email request for a specific date. Her thinking is, if by any chance she's able to finagle staff and there's an opening in the December Planning Commission hearing date, we could come back that early. Otherwise, hopefully, it'll be in January. So I withdraw my objection to the date uncertain now, understanding how staff is approaching it. And then the, just the underlying thing is, Santa Lucia Preserve has a 1999 use permit that established under the zoning ordinance, country club uses for the main property. Staff just wanted to have a better understanding of what those consist of, because this property was purchased by The Ranch Club for future uses, which we'll get into when we come back at the scheduled date. So we're now in support of the staff recommendation, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Very good. Are there any other? Okay. Let's open this up to the general public. Thank you very much. County Council just reminded me that the discussion now is around the continuance we're having, not about any other issues. So if there's any, any members of the public that would like to comment on the continuation, which has been requested, please come forward. Or, Madam Clerk, is there anyone you see pop up online?
No emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you very much. All right, staff, I'm sure, how, what's your feeling about the retraction? Is that, everybody's cool with that?
Yes, staff has no additional comments.
Great. All righty. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, given that, I'd like to move staff's recommendation that we continue this item to a date uncertain, as they recommend.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Deal and a second by Commissioner Gomez for the continuation of this item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right. It passes. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda then, for everybody, as soon as I turn the page, will be PLN number 200047. I think I have enough zeros in there. AMDI, AMDI or one. Michelle and Michael Klop, it looks like. Staff, are you prepared? Please begin.
Give me one second to pull up my presentation. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Getzelman and Planning Commissioners. I'm Kayla Nelson, the project planner for HCD planning file number PLN 200047, AMD1 for the NOUP amendment project. The project is located at 120 Country Club Heights Road in Carmel Valley, which is guided by the Carmel Valley Master Plan. The parcel is zoned rural density residential, 10 acres per unit, with a design control, site plan review, and residential allocation zoning overlays. The project involves an amendment to a previously approved combined development permit that allowed a lot line adjustment between two legal lots of record, construction of a single-family dwelling, a detached accessory structure, guest house, and associated site improvements, including ridgeline development and development on slopes in excess of 25%. This amendment proposes the removal of six coastal live oak trees with a trunk diameter of 14, 16, 24, 29, 32, and 40 inches to accommodate the necessary road improvements to allow fire truck access to the main residence. The County of Monterey has established the required findings needed to justify tree removal. Those findings are here on the screen, and they require that it is the minimum tree removal required under the circumstances of the case. Removal will not adversely, would not create environmental impacts. And furthermore, if the tree is disease-injured and danger of falling too close to an existing or proposed structure creates unsafe vision clearance or is likely to promote the spread of insects or disease, then we would accept that as a candidate for removal. Pursuant to Title 21 of the Monterey County zoning ordinance, for the protection of oak trees, a use permit is required for the removal of more than three protected trees in a one-year period, and a forest management plan is required for such tree removal one-year period, and a forest management plan is required for such tree removal pursuant to this section. The project site consists of heavily sloped terrain in excess of 25%. The existing dirt driveway access to the main residence is long and narrow, with oak trees growing close to the grading limits of the necessary improvements to allow fire truck access in the case of an emergency. The project planner and the applicant discussed alternatives that may reduce or avoid additional tree removal. However, the applicant explained that a redesign of the driveway would not be possible, given the steep topography of the project site. The planner met with arborists to examine the trees proposed for removal and to verify the site constraints. The planner's observation of the driveway confirmed how narrow the existing access road is and that a redesign in this case is not feasible. Therefore, the project has been designed and cited to minimize the removal of protected trees to the greatest extent feasible. A forest management plan was prepared by Denise Duffy and Associates, which recommended the removal of six coastal live oak trees, including three landmark trees. Trees greater than 24 inches are considered landmark trees, which require a two-to-one replacement ratio and a one-to-one replacement for trees under 24 inches. One of the proposed trees is in poor condition and is showing signs of decay with the presence of fungal conchs, which are, while the remaining five trees are in fair condition but will be heavily impacted by the road improvements. The necessary cut and fill of the road to install soil-stabilizing retaining walls would significantly impact tree root systems, potentially leading to hazardous conditions. Without the necessary cut for roadway improvements, the road will not meet fire code standards. The forest management plan recommends replacement plantings of 15 five-gallon coastal live oaks sourced from a local nursery in locations with the greatest openings to minimize competition and maximize sunlight. Staff would like to note that the 15 trees include a one-to-one ratio for the removal of three hazardous trees that were approved under a separate permit, and two additional trees, one of which is a landmark tree, under a separate tree removal permit. The spacing between trees is recommended to be at least eight feet. Watering for the establishment of the replacement trees within the first two months shall be at least once per week, then every two weeks during the late spring, summer, and fall for two years. Furthermore, the replacement trees, whose critical root zone was within the areas impacted by construction, will be monitored annually by a qualified arborist for a period of no less than five years. If any noticeable decline in the health of any trees is observed, additional trees shall be planted onsite at a one-to-one ratio in a suitable location determined by the qualified arborist. Upon review of the submitted information, staff finds the proposed tree removal is appropriate for the site. Staff recommends the planning commission find the project categorically exempt pursuant to the SECA guidelines and approve the amendment to a previously approved combined development permit to allow the removal of six coastal live oak trees based on the presented findings and evidence. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for your questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions? Commissioner Amy.
I think the only question I have, and you may have covered it, is why the, why this wasn't anticipated in the original design?
Through the chair. In the initial submittal through the original entitlement, there were five trees that were suspected to be slated for removal, but the, the project engineers were confident that they could protect those trees in place, but after the grading permit was issued and grading was, had commenced, it was observed by the arborist that it was not feasible to save those trees, and therefore, an amendment had to come back, and that's before you today, just to make the necessary site improvements to allow fire access.
Thank you.
Yes, my apologies, Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the same issue, because if we have an expert, we tend to rely upon those people. I would have, I would have liked to have had this discussion when we approved the design for the driveway, because one of the, one of the considerations that made this project so acceptable to me was that it had been designed to best ability to save landmark trees. We now come back for a permit to go ahead and take out some landmark trees. This is troublesome. So I don't know whether there's a procedural way to address it in terms of engineering coordination with, with tree people or some such, but it's, it feels like being asked to do something for which there is no choice after the fact, when we would have liked to have considered that going in. It might not have had any different outcome. And the other thing I'll say is that I personally have observed conchs on live oak trees over the past 35 years without the tree falling down. So I'm personally not accepting of that as a short-term diagnosis for a coastal live oak tree on its merits. So just, observation tends to trump deduction for me personally. So, thanks.
Commissioner Montalvez.
Thank you. I'm struggling with the same thing, but also, in my reading, it says that five trees were already removed. So we've already had three trees that were deemed hazardous and removed without a use Hazardous tree removal, five trees in total in any case, and the first three, staff said yes. The next two were part of three that can be removed also without some kind of permit, so they went ahead and removed those two. So that's a total of five gone. And now you're back for another six total to be removed? When initially there were none to be removed, and now there will be a total of 11?
Through the chair, correct. Also, through the chair, Monterey County Code, if trees are deemed hazardous, they can be removed without, it's documented, but it doesn't need an administrative tree permit for those removals. However, in one given year, in the inland area, three trees are allowed to be removed under approval of the Director of Planning. So that's where those two trees were removed. However, additional trees needed to be removed. In this case, this is a very long driveway. I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but when I went onsite, it was very clear to me how necessary this is to allow fire access. And so I wanted to capture the six additional trees that are requested to be removed under this use permit, but to distinguish that any hazardous tree is allowed to be removed, three trees within one-year period, and anything after that would have to be before you today.
And that brings me to my final comment, that every time we see, oh, this one's hazardous, it doesn't matter, because they don't need planning commission approval to remove a hazardous tree then. So it comes before us as justification for the request, but you just said, and I've read, that if it's hazardous, it doesn't have to come before us for that approval.
Through the chair, any hazardous tree needs a tree rating from a qualified arborist, and the justification is within the arborist's report to us. So documentation needs to be provided. We analyze that information before us, and then if it's an issue where it's like a health, life, and safety hazard, then we're not going to wait to take that to hearing if it's going to jeopardize anyone's safety.
Understood. So a total of 11 trees, but there just happened to be six that couldn't be justified without coming here first. So five were able to get removed without coming here, and now the last six have to come here. Where were those five? Were they, where were those five removed from that, where, could we see those on the, on the drawing?
Absolutely. Yeah. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Let me try to share this. Give me one sec. Here we go. Okay. Let me zoom out on this. So this was a site plan that was provided to me by the arborist. Can you see it? So closer to the residence, there was a, what? Okay, this should help. So the residence is located at the top of a very steep hill. There was a hazardous coastal live oak near the residence, actually, two of them. The other, the 48-inch was removed under a administrative tree removal permit. The 16-inch was approved under that same administrative permit, and then this 30-inch was deemed hazardous, according to the arborist's report. According to Monterey County Code, it does not mention that, does not mention, it allows up to three tree removal permits, I mean, three trees to be removed under one single permit. So that's where those two were removed. The arborist had deemed those three other trees hazardous by a tree rating. And as you can see, this is a very, very long road, leading all the way to the main residence. And the engineers of the project tried really hard to protect the trees in place, and after commencing the grading, that's when it was discovered that it was not feasible in this case, given the narrow road and the steep topography of the site.
Commissioner Deal.
So the tree's not hazardous when it's standing in the middle of the forest by itself, and we aren't developing anything. So under this reasoning, setting aside this project for a minute, if we approve a project and go through the careful process of examining trees to make sure that we're taking, we're authorizing the minimum number of removals, then any tree deemed hazardous, once the project is built, because it wasn't before that, can be taken out with a permit. Three healthy trees a year can be taken out indefinitely. So why do we even worry about it? It's like people can, what are the standards by which we attempt to move? I'm not saying that these aren't reasonable. I mean, I'm troubled by the fact that it, that their ambition was greater than their ability in the initial permit, but that seems kind of moot if it doesn't really matter, because you can take out three a year anyway. It's like, okay, I want my three for 2025. It's 2026, I'd like another three. They're, they're hazardous, because I just built this new driveway, and this tree that was perfectly fine before is now near this new driveway, and it's not doing really well. So now I want to take it out. So it seems like you could, you could, again, separate from this project, not alleging anything about these owners, just work your way through any trees that happen to displease you indefinitely. And so that being the case, I wonder at all the care that we put in to try to determine the minimum that we believe could be taken out. It just seems, it seems frustrating.
Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Mendoza.
Yes, the only question I have would be, when we first received this project, there was an arborist's report that basically said, like we just said earlier, X and Os were to be removed. And the fire department also looked at the project, and they mentioned that that was acceptable as far as the width and everything else. So what has changed? I mean, if we don't remove these additional trees, do we still have a project, or do we not? And then the other question would be, basically in reference to using the hazard mentality or code, every single tree that is close to the road would be a hazard. So are we going to remove every single tree down our highways? Makes absolutely no sense. It almost sounds like those trees just happen to be, or grown, or they grew in the wrong part of the property, but whether they're a hazard or not, I mean, I have several oak trees on my property, and they're going to fall, you know, whenever they fall, there's no control about it. And there's trees that you probably won't think would not make another winter, and they're still standing. So I, if the width and everything is acceptable for the fire department, and I think we kind of have to work around the trees. That's just kind of my opinion. And if the width is there, and you still have a project that was, what we approved earlier, I don't see why we would have to remove additional trees. Thank you.
Did you want to reply?
Yeah, through the chair. So I would like to emphasize that the road is existing. However, in order to put the retaining walls in, to make the road safe and to allow that fire access, you have to grade down, and that's what's going to impact the roots of those existing trees. And it will eventually lead to a hazardous condition of those trees. They will not survive.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, but that's not a surprise. We knew that. We had a permit for fixing, for building that driveway. So it's not a new situation based on the original request for a driveway that satisfies the fire department. You know you're going to have to grade build. We talked about retaining walls. So that's not a new situation. You know, it's, just, just to be clear, I think perhaps what I'm struggling with is the rule, underlying rule, but I do feel in this case as if the initial application was flawed. So we're correcting something I don't think we have a choice, myself personally, unless somebody can see differently and tell me. But I feel as if the initial application was flawed, because creating all of the engineering support work for a driveway to support the fire department is in the plans already. Those are the plans we originally saw. Anyway, as you can tell, I'm grumpy. I'm not sure it has any, any practical application to anything.
No, welcome to my world. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, you going to give us a summation?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Chair Getzelman had just asked a question in terms of the permit, the tree permit for up to three per year. And I did just want to clarify that there are still findings that need to be made in order to, to get that permit administratively, as opposed to coming for a use permit, and if those findings cannot be made, we do refer it for a use permit removal. So it doesn't fully address the concern, but just for clarification, there is still, there are still some findings in a litmus, even for that up to three per year, that you can get that tree permit for.
Thank you very much. All right, then we are, any further questions? No, not from the commission. So we are to the point then where we'd like to have the presentation from the applicant or the applicant's agent on this project.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I really appreciated the conversation, discussion we had on this, and we do have some diagram maps that we can maybe answer a part of the, some part of the questions, and we And we, my name is Tai Tang. I'm the architect representing the applicant today from Studio Sheik Tans. And we have our civil engineer, Richard Weber.
Sorry. We have our engineer, Richard Weber, from Witten Engineering, who's here to answer questions. We also have the arborist, Patrick Krabacher, from Denise Staffee via Zoom to answer any technical questions we would have from our arborist. But I'd like to first thank the Monterey County for doing this presentation and allow my time here. So this amendment is to the addition of the tree removal for the six live trees. I would like, if you can, Kayla, to pull up the diagrams we have. There's four short sheets. I would like to clarify some of the questions, if you can share the screen.
Alex, can you please share stuff, right, HDMI? Thank you.
So this first map diagram shows the location of the six trees that we are requesting for the additional removal, which is along the lower part and the mid part of the almost two-mile-long driveway. And we already mentioned, you know, the number of the trees. And if you can move to the second page. So the photos you will see on all these six trees, six trees, we have added protection and our initial attempt is to save when we can. So the protection is in place and our initial trial to save it. But if you can see on the map above, Kayla, if you can zoom in on the, on the road where the red arrow is pointing to the, to the right, further to the right a little bit more. You see the bubble, the blue bubble shows where the tree is, where it is encroaching into the road, the driveway, which is a fire truck route, requires to be 12 feet. And over here, we're at eight feet. And we, our initial attempt is to save the tree to narrow the driveway conflicted with the fire truck route that is indicated here. I'm sure that our civil engineer, Richard, can explain better to that. And I kind of just wanted to point out this one tree, this scenario is where all these six trees are really close to the driveway, where the tree root system Kayla had mentioned also will have impact, which I'll explain a little bit later. So if you can move to the second page. So this page shows the four trees that's almost together, two and two. Tree four and tree three are together. Tree five and tree six are together. And we also had the protection on them to try to save them. And upon reviewing with the arborist, and it was understood that these trees, because the nature of the road is on a cliffside, where that's the only place we can have the road because the steep angle. And with the 12-feet minimum requirement from the fire marshals, we are, the trees becoming so close to the driveway, as you can see, the driveway is right next to them. The nature, my understanding of the tree up on the hill, on the incline, the roots grow upwards to anchor themselves into the grade. But once we start carving down, adding retaining walls, compacting the earth, it impacts more than 50% of the tree roots. That's where the tree would likely to fail. And when the tree fails, it'll topple down and push the earth up so the driveway would be blocked off, where would impede on any fire truck's route to, to move through. So that was the later difficulty. We found out that these trees have become what we call hazardous, which I understand if we don't create this route, we definitely won't have this problem. But when, you know, this is the only route we can create within the existing premise of the road to make it feasible, make the fire truck accessible, it becomes the, become a potential for danger, danger. And within that, within the four years we're developing this project, several trees have fallen near the road. That's due to storm. So these trees are not really stabilized. Hence the arborist did a thorough report on the trees, tree, the health of the trees as well. And if you can show the last page, similarly, on the last, the last tree is also right next to the route. The previous five trees that was approved, three of them are, were in the direct path of this road. It's right inside of the road that we had to remove. And two trees that, near the outside where Kayla pointed out, where the tree is right at the very steep top with root hanging out, we had to add retaining walls to that. By adding that retaining wall, they also impact those trees. Hence, we were very clear that those are trees either in poor health or directly in the route or on the retaining side, we applied for removal. And these six trees, as you can see with the protection in place, we intended to save them. With the construction trucks moving on, on site and off site, we tried to avoid them. But it was later learned from our arborist, both our arborist, our civil engineer and the fire marshal, that the width of the fire truck route had to be maintained. Hence, we're applying for this amendment. So this is my presentation on that. Any questions might have, I believe, Richard Weber from our civil engineer can answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good morning. Richard Weber with Witten Engineers. I'd just like to speak to some of the questions that came up and they're very salient questions regarding why these trees weren't identified originally. Usually our intent, or typically our intent is to avoid and save as many trees as we can. The owner's preference was to try to preserve these trees. And I will mention this road is flanked with oak trees throughout, throughout the length. These six happen to have a root structure that does not allow us to kind of bridge the root zones due to the soil conditions at these six individual trees. So this, this road is maybe a mile and a half long, I would guess. And during that, you encounter different soil conditions and different root structures with every tree. So we try as our best to identify which trees, you know, we're not going to be able to save and which trees have, are possible candidates. And in this situation, we even worked with the fire department to narrow the road at a couple of locations in order to try to preserve these trees. As you get into construction, you start zeroing in on the actual locations with everyone, with the soil types and the root structures for each one, because we can't see that during design per se. And so these six candidates, because where they're growing along the road and below the road and the root structure and the soil conditions, all culminating in one, did not allow us to really bridge these areas and provide a adequate fire route through, through this area. So that is my best attempt at trying to answer your questions of why we didn't identify these originally. Our goal is to try to minimize impacts. And sometimes you get into constructions and you realize with your best efforts, you can't do it just because of what you find as you open, see what the soil conditions are in the root zones. So that's, that's kind of where we landed with these six, unfortunately. But there are occasions, and on this road, there's many trees that line the road that we are able to bridge over the root zone safely and not compromise, compromise the tree or the, or the road. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you hang just for a minute? I think Commissioner Deal might have a question.
I do, thank you. And thank you for coming to talk about that. I certainly understand on the ground versus design. And I'm looking at tree protection here that is, is this what we are talking about when we're talking about tree protection? Because I'm used to protection that considers potential root zones being in place as tree protection. So is this a normal, I mean, did you, does this, I assume, part of the civil engineering process is protecting trees that you may be able to save? Is this is the extent of protection that you would normally provide on a given tree?
I would normally let the arborist answer that, but from my experience, generally when you have a road over an existing, usually you try to flank the foliage, the drip line of the tree. And those are usually in natural states. In this condition, the, the road actually exists. So the road is already built underneath the canopy and through the canopy. So usually the, the tree protection zone is actually protecting the bark, the trunk itself from being hit because the, the construction zone is adjacent to the tree. So you wouldn't necessarily fence around the, the drip line of the tree. Otherwise, you couldn't construct anything. That answer your question?
Yes, although I guess another question for the arborist is, once you've identified trees in that condition, they should be, in my view, considered as potential removals because you already know they're there, you already know there's an issue and the backside of that would be that if you could save them, you would. But it would seem to me that in the initial consideration of the project, which is what's creating the issue here, the existing road was the existing road, didn't, didn't have retaining walls and engineering structures that would potentially provide for additional impacts. So my, again, going forward, my preference would be to identify at-risk trees, discuss the efforts to save those trees, make every effort to save those trees, but to prevent, to do that upfront. So you end up looking like a hero rather than somebody who's trying to weasel through something that we might not have otherwise said, which I don't think would have been the case here. You know, it's just, it sits wrong this way. It sits wrong. Everybody's coming in and say, oh yeah, you know this, we always knew this, you, this is going to happen. And that's, that was initial. The tree didn't just grow, the road didn't change its location. All those things are previously understood conditions. And, and that's where my heartburn comes from, not from any of the conditions on the ground with this project.
Yeah, I guess the, my rebuttal to be fair about that, there's, you know, 30 or 40 trees that flank this. So if we identified 30 or 40 trees along the entire route, it's, it makes it a challenge, right? Because we, we're not, they, they could be identified as maybe potential takes. I don't know how you address the reality take for a potential take and then the tree removal plan that shows, you know, that you take out the 40 trees. And that's usually the very first item that happens is the tree removal guy goes in and clears it out. And so, yeah, there's, there's that in-between of, how do you assess that at the soil types, the root structures, all that, all at once? And it's, it's, that's a challenge. Yeah.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have great faith in engineers and tree people to meet challenges, personally. I, I hold that faith closely. But it would be, it would sit better to me if we came in with this thing that says, we may need to reduce, to remove 40 trees. We're going to do our best not to. We know we're going to remove this many and we have the ability to save some of these others maybe, but we, we guess some of them not. So that I had that in front of me when I was being asked by the people in Monterey County to approve a finding that says we have approved the minimum removal of trees in this case. Because if we don't know, that finding is not honest. And so that's where I'm after is if, and yeah, you're right, somebody could come in and take all 40 down and they do that. This applicant has not done that. That's great. But we, we should know that that could have happened here with a less competent engineering staff. It could have come in and said, oh yeah, this, and believe me, we don't see very many trees that are healthy that need to be removed. They're always in some way damaged or suffering or ill or hazardous. It's like the main illness appears to be that they're in the way. So I understand the challenge here, but I'm saying the challenge has got to be met in a way that provides the worst-case scenario to the decision and not subsequent to the decision when we're already committed to the project, as we are in this case. Because then there's no choice. It's not really a decision, it's just a formality. You know?
Yeah. And I don't like coming back and I also avoid, I don't want to take out 40 trees. So I have to push back on clients too to say, well, if we take out 40, they may, they may take out 40. I'm trying to, I'm trying to preserve them too, so.
And I, I think we rely on, on our local contractors to provide that, all our local contractors, to provide that local knowledge that that's really important and you're missing in a big value of your property if you're from somewhere else where you don't value that. I mean, so there's an awful lot of unspoken stuff that is important in development, but when we get down to what we're saying, we got to say the truth. And if we don't have the information, we're not saying the truth and that's where I get in, I mean, you know, we do sit up here.
Yeah, we could do this for a long time.
Thank you.
Any, any other commissioners? No? All right, very well. Thank you so much. We would like to open the discussion now to the general public. Are there members of the public that would like to speak to this application? Please come up and give us your name, please.
Douglas Fay, River Road, resident, Parker Road. My concern is, my father was an ocean lifeguard. I'm a professional emergency first response instructor and Commissioner Deal pointed that out, that professionals should be professional from the get-go. My main concern is fires and being two miles up a road in, where our ranch is off Parker Road, we're two miles up a dirt road. And I pride myself in getting the bumps out of that dirt road and reducing erosion. And during the river fire, I can tell you that when that lightning strike hit Torrel Park, I called my neighbor Steve Dorance, who was there on site, and said, Steve, what's happening? He says, they've got it under control, don't worry. I said, Steve, prepare for the worst. And he kind of didn't heed that advice. And sure enough, it flared up and then the fire department, somebody did a backburn and we lost 50,000 acres. We lost the Parker House, a neighbor's historical residence. Our ranch that's been there in the family for over 100 years, I called Torrel Fire Department and said, we need a fire drop. We don't have fire protection. They replied that it's in CDF's hands now. We can't do anything. So I pleaded and pleaded and pleaded. We got one fire drop. Luckily, we saved the structures and we lost everything else. And the problem with putting homes two miles up a road and not having a swimming pool or some sort of water source is you're putting people's lives at dangers and structures at dangers. And here you are having a lengthy conversation about trees. It's a flawed process because you're not looking at the elephant in the room and that is fire protection. And it's, it's tragic that you're putting all these homes in, in these rural areas and higher fire areas and you're not thinking about the folks that have been there for decades, if not generations. My family's been in this valley for six generations. And we were not given fire protection when we needed it the most. So you have to think about that element when you're having these lengthy discussions about fire protection. And also, I was in LA during the Palisades fire. I called three friends in the Palisades Bowl, if you're familiar with that area. They got out in time, they lost their homes. And again, the only people that saved their homes were the people that had swimming pools and a water system and they stood and fought and they could have lost their lives. But everyone who evacuated lost everything. And people don't recover from that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone, any other members of the public? Anyone here in the room like to comment? No? Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online?
No emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Staff, do you have any comments, any summation you'd like to make?
Staff does not have any additional information at this time.
Okay, very good. Let's bring it back to the commission then for discussion. Commissioner Roberts?
I think my, the only thing I, the only problem I have with this amendment is that we didn't get the opportunity to consider it originally. However, hearing the testimony today, it sounds like the intent was to do the least possible. And in reading the conditions of the original application, there is a condition that says, it talks specifically about the trees. And I believe it talks about the five trees that we're considering today. Is that true? Are those the same five trees? It's, it's, or maybe it's, it's trees that were also previously removed, I don't know. But there's, it says, after consulting with engineers and the arborists, that all five trees may be retained through protection and avoidance. Therefore, the county has applied for condition seven, blah, blah, blah. And I guess my conflict is, I appreciate this applicant trying very hard to reduce, to not eliminate trees. And we're kind of scolding this applicant for not asking for 40 trees. And, but I also understand the, the need to be able to consider the project as a whole in its original form. So this is a complicated one for me. I think there's no, there's no question in my mind that these trees need to be removed at this point. at this point. And so I'm happy to support it. But I always have a little bit of difficulty scolding the applicants who are trying to do the least possible. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Deal?
I'm sorry if it felt like scolding the applicant. I was just struggling with the process. Perhaps going forward, if we have, as you said, we identified some trees that they're trying to save, perhaps we could identify, we're going to try to save them, but we might not be able to do so. And if we can't, we'd like to get that permit right now because it may well be that they won't make it. Maybe some process like that would, would sit better for me. But again, no, I appreciate this applicant and I'm happy to move that we approve the project as recommended by staff.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Deal. We have a second. Commissioner Montalvez, seconds. So I would just like to say, yes, I think what you're hearing is just some frustration from, from the commission in that we were, just, we felt we were blindsided. That may not be the case at all if we had read more carefully. But that was the feeling. And I think that's what you're feeling is the frustration. So let's vote on the measure then, on the motion. Yes?
Can I just add one thing? Piggybacking on Commissioner Deal's is that I guess for staff, if this had been the same five trees, I don't know if it was. If they were and they were identified originally in the application, then maybe that's where we bring, those are brought to light, like, hey, these five trees may not be able to be saved, and this is how we're going to address them without having to do this amendment.
Yes, thank you. Madam Secretary?
Yeah, and I want to thank you for the discussion. We actively, while you all are discussing, are going back and looking at the plans, looking at the approval process internally to see if and where there could have been some better communication. We've also actively been increasing our communication with fire as well in the review process because, because there are subsequent permits that come, there are subsequent approvals. So I think there are a few, we, just for this commission to know and for our applicants, we, I think there are a few places where we can also look to just improve and have a little more transparency and flag more of that transparency, specifically when we bring items forward, that helps address this, the sort of necessary disconnect between what we can tell during the planning phase, every intention. But there are still these kind of on-the-ground and construction-level potential. So we will definitely bring that back as lesson learned for our staff as well to carry this conversation forward. And hopefully, the next time we have a circumstance, we will, yeah, it'll be a little more transparent and we'll feel a little bit less like something was not shared up front.
Thank you. Yes, I think that's all we need is just, perhaps just a little bit more information included, not, not to get carried away. We don't want to be buried in paper. But on the other hand, a little more information would be helpful. All right, let's vote then, shall we? All those in favor of, well, we have a motion by Commissioner Deal and a second by Commissioner Montalvez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Unanimous vote then. All right. Well, being an old person, I'm going to call a five-minute recess so that we can have a little break.
Thank you.
We have, we will, we will expens, oh, there's Commissioner Deal. We'll dispense with the roll call. We have the same group that we had the last time. Everyone's here as before. Commissioner Deal will join us in just a moment after she gets, oh, sorry. You're listening. She's paying very close attention. So we will begin with the third item on the agenda today, then, PLN number 220348, Omni Resorts Resources LLC. Staff, when you're ready?
Good morning, Chair Getzelman and members of the Planning Commission. Fiona Jensen presenting Omni Resources LLC, HCD Planning File Number PLN 220348. The project site is located at 3 Corral de Tierra Road in the Toro area plan. The property is zoned light commercial with a B8 overlay and design control overlay. The property was previously developed with a fueling station in Convenience Market from 1966 to 2002. In 2002, the fueling station operator was notified of the need to remediate the site's contaminated soils. The site's fuel pumps and underground storage tanks were removed, and the contaminated soils were remediated with regulatory oversight from the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. In March 2020, a closure letter was issued indicating remediation and corrective action had been completed and no further action is required. The proposed project includes construction of a 12-pump fueling station with a 4,860 square foot canopy, a 3,077 square foot Convenience Market, and a variance to reduce the side and rear setbacks to 1 foot 4 inches and 1 foot 11 inches. Associated site improvements include a 265 square foot trash enclosure, onsite parking with light poles, landscaping, a fuel price sign, roadway improvements to Highway 68 and Corral de Tierra Road, and three underground diesel and gasoline storage tanks totaling 40,000 gallons. The fueling station and Convenience Market would be open 24/7 and provide food, drink, basic groceries, personal care, et cetera, for local residences, residents, visitors, and the traveling public. Currently, there is no fueling station between Stone Creek Village Shopping Center in Delray Oaks and the Sarah Village in Toro. Consistent with general plan policies that encourage commercial activities to serve the public and be located in convenient areas, the proposed project would serve the existing population of the county and specifically nearby communities along Highway 68, which include Corral de Tierra, San Bonansio, Ambler Park, and Pasadena, by providing a convenient and reliable fueling option in an area that currently lacks one. The project's four driveways would be located, would be closed with implementation of the project. All access to the project site would be provided by three off-site driveways and internal access roads that were approved with the adjacent Corral de Tierra Retail Village. The retail village has yet to be constructed, but the owner is currently in the process of complying with the retail village's conditions of approval and mitigation measures to obtain a construction permit to install these three driveways. Staff has applied a condition of approval to the proposed project to ensure that these access improvements are installed prior to operation of the gas station. As proposed and designed, the project includes roadway improvements to Corral de Tierra Road and Highway 68. A median would be installed on Corral de Tierra Road in front of the first driveway, and a dual-lane turn lane would be added into the center of this road. The proposed project also includes Highway 68 modifications that include elongating the westbound left turn lane by approximately 127 feet and shortening the eastbound turn lane that currently serves five private residences. This improvement is proposed to accommodate the project's two to four additional vehicles that would use this turn lane during the AM and PM, peak hours. Caltrans has reviewed this improvement and has not raised any concerns. Highway 68 is designated as a state scenic highway, and Corral de Tierra Road is a locally designated scenic corridor. The project is rural and, the project area is rural, and the only other development visible from the project site is an adjacent existing convenience store to the west and a church to the north. Pursuant to Toro Area Plan Policy T 3.1, new development in visually sensitive areas such as the subject property may be permitted if the development is located and designed in such a manner that enhances the scenic value of the area and that the architectural design is consistent with the rural nature of the Toro area. The primary facade of the convenience store would include green, brown board and batten with vertical natural wood facades, composite dark gray roofs and awnings and a metal, a dark metal window trim. The side facades consist of an off-white board and batten exterior. The proposed convenience store would be of similar height and massing to nearby residences and other buildings and would include a similar exterior features as other visible structures from Highway 68. Finally, the varying height between the convenience store, 25 feet, and the canopy, 18 and 1/2 feet, would break up the perceived bulk and mass of the property's structures, specifically when traveling along Highway 68. The project's design would The project's design would be visually consistent with Toro area, and the development will be subordinate to the natural features of the area. The proposed canopy over the fueling station would include lighting to illuminate the pumps and provide customer access to the convenience store. As designed and conditioned, the canopy lighting will have reduced lumens from dusk to dawn with motion-activated sensors to increase lumens when vehicles enter the canopy area. To ensure that canopy lighting does not glare onto nearby roadways, condition number 13 requires that the lighting fixtures be full cutoff and recessed into the canopy. Toro area plan T 3.3 requires 100-foot setback on lots adjacent to state and county-designated scenic routes such as Highway 68 and Corral de Tierra. Accordingly, the subject property has 200-foot set, front setbacks, which is shown here in red. The property is also subject to a 21- and 20-foot side and rear setback, shown in green and blue. Pursuant to policy T 3.3, the 100-foot front setback may be reduced for existing lots of record that have no developable area outside of the setback. Strict compliance with the subject property's setbacks would result in a building area of only approximately 4,000 square feet or approximately 14% of the lot. As proposed, the convenience store would be located outside of this 100-foot setback, but the fueling canopy would be located entirely within. The fueling canopy is located in the only appropriate area that allows for adequate onsite circulation while also allowing the site to be developed with a convenience store. Additionally, the fuel canopy is an open structure that will meet the intent of the policy to ensure views of open space and landscaping areas. Based on the site's constraints, the required setbacks, the openness of the fueling canopy area, and the planned functional unity with the foreseeable village retail center, staff has determined that there is no developable area that would accommodate a reasonably sized, like, commercial use on this property. Thus, staff believes that a reduction of the 100-foot setback is appropriate in this case to allow construction of the fueling canopy. In addition to the reduction of the 100-foot setback to accommodate the proposed fueling canopy, the applicant is seeking a variance to reduce the required side and rear setbacks to accommodate the proposed convenience store. The light commercial zoning district allows a 50% site coverage and allows setbacks to be based on surrounding land use, onsite parking, and site design. Essentially, if deemed appropriate, other light commercially zoned properties, such as the property just located west, could be developed with minimal or no setbacks without the granting of a variance. However, the subject property has not afforded this privilege because of its B8 overlay, which enforces the setbacks of the B4 overlay, or 20 feet for the rear and 10% of the lot width. The subject property, as well as the adjacent lot under common ownership and plan for the retail village, are the only two commercially zoned properties in the Toro area plan with the extra setback requirement of the B8 overlay. The required setbacks encumber 86% of the subject lot. Further, citing the convenience store towards the rear of the property allows for better functional unity and visual unity with the planned retail village and allows for it to comply with the 100-foot setback requirement. Consequently, the subject property, due to the restrictions imposed by the B8 overlay and the resulting significantly smaller building area, is deprived of a reasonable opportunity to support an economically viable commercial use. Accordingly, staff believes that the granting of the proposed variance would not be a special privilege, given the size, site constraints, and more flexible setback requirements of all other light commercially zoned properties in the Toro area plan. Additionally, improving access to fuel for residents, commuters, and local businesses, and reducing the need to travel longer distances for basic services does not constitute a special privilege in this case. The subject property's commercial land use designation dates back nearly 50 years and is reflected in both the 1982 and 2010 general plan. The site was developed with a fueling station in 1966 and then transferred to the subject owner's family in 1974. The B8 overlay was enacted in November 1992 due to concerns with groundwater supply in the Toro area. The B8 district was primarily adopted to present, prevent new parcels from being created in the Toro area, but also restricts new development and/or intensification of land use where it would be detrimental to groundwater supply and to the health, safety, and welfare of residences in the area. The B8 district does, however, allow for construction or expansion of commercial uses where such expansion can be found to not adversely affect the constraints that cause the B8 district to be applied to the property. To determine whether the proposed project would be detrimental to groundwater supply, staff analyzed the project site's proposed and historical water demand data. Since the prior gas station was in operation in 1992, its water use at that time would have been accounted for in the baseline water conditions that established the B8 overlay. The prior fueling station and convenience store demanded approximately 1.2 acre-feet per year. The proposed project would demand approximately 0.84 acre-feet of water per year. Accordingly, the proposed project would not exceed the subject property's water demand at the time the B8 district was applied to the property in 1992 and would instead reduce the historical water demand by 0.37 acre-feet per year. Given the continued commercial use of the property and reduced water demand when compared to historical water demanded by the site, staff's analysis has concluded that the project complies with the restrictions of the B8 overlay. According to the project-specific traffic assessment, the project is estimated to attract approximately 3,181 vehicle trips per day, with 193 of these trips being in the morning peak hour and 221 of these trips being in the evening peak hour. However, most of these vehicles will already be traveling to and from the project site as pass-by trips as they're already on Highway 68 or Corral de Tierra Road, and they are just choosing to make a stop at the site on their way to their final destination. Therefore, a pass-by trip reduction rate was applied to the project's projected trip generation to account for the existing trips along these local roadways. With the pass-by trip reduction rate applied, the project is estimated to generate only 73 new vehicle trips in the morning peak hour and 97, 97 trips in the PM peak hour. In addition, these new trips generated by the project are assumed to be locally serving and less than three miles in length due to the proximity of other gas stations along Highway 68. The projected trip generation will not significantly affect level of service operations at Highway 68 intersections near the project site and will not cause Highway 68 intersections to degrade below acceptable level of service. Over the past two years, county staff has coordinated with Caltrans staff to confirm that the proposed project will not conflict with the planned Highway 68 roundabout project at the subject intersection. The image on the right illustrates the full buildout of the subject property as well as the retail village, as well as the preliminary design of the roundabout demonstrating compatibility. The project was referred to the Toro Land Use Advisory Committee for review on May 28, 2025, at which the LUEC recommended support of the project and requested that project, the project's scale be reduced and earth-toned colors be incorporated. In response to these recommendations, the convenience store height was slightly reduced and the exterior colors were changed to reflect a more rural and rustic character, as called for by the Toro area plan. Members of the public raised concerns related to lighting, the number of fuel canopies, fuel pumps, historical versus proposed height of the convenience store and canopy, sale of alcohol, and hours of operation. Separately, staff has received numerous letters of support citing the introduction of a needed service into the community and the thoughtful architectural design. Members of the public opposing the project have raised concerns related to the scale of the project versus the historical fueling station, access to the project site from Highway 68, and the need for environmental review. SEQA Guideline Section 15183 allows for a streamlined environmental review if a project is consistent with the development density established in a previously certified general plan or community plan environmental impact report, and there are no project-specific peculiar environmental impacts or more severe environmental impacts than those analyzed in the EIR. Projects that meet this criteria, these criterias, are subject to a statutory exemption established in Public Resources Code Section 21083.3. To determine the project's eligibility for this statutory exemption and streamlined environmental review, HCD planning staff prepared a SEQA Guideline Section 15183 consistency checklist. This checklist is attached to today's staff report as Exhibit C and concluded that the project is consistent with the development density of the light commercial zoning district and B8 overlay, and the project would not result in any significant effects on the environment that have not already been analyzed in the 2010 general plan, EIR, or that are more significant than those previously analyzed, or that uniformly applicable development policies would not substantially mitigate. Staff recommends some revisions to the draft resolution. These include incorporating reference to the Public Resources Code Section 2183.3, clarifying the timing for the reduced canopy lightings to dusk to dawn rather than dawn to dusk, correct the proposed roofing material, clarify that the variance and reduced front setback apply to specific structures, not the entire property, clarify the timing of condition number 14, and other minor edits. Staff is happy to share the revisions if needed. Additionally, staff is recommending modifications to condition number 13 to add additional performance criteria to the canopy lighting and modifying condition number 14 to only require that access improvements be installed prior to inspection, final inspection of the proposed project. With those changes, staff recommends the Planning Commission find the project qualifies for a statutory exemption pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15183 and Public Resources Code Section 21083.3 is consistent with the development density of the 2010 general plan, and there are no site-specific significant effects which are peculiar to the site. Additionally, approve a combined development permit consisting of a use permit, administrative permit, and design approval to allow construction of a fueling station and convenience store and associated on- and off-site improvements, and a variance to reduce the required side and rear setbacks. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Do we have questions, commissioners, for Ms. Jensen? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I really appreciate that clear and concise report. I'd like to go back to slide number, um, let's see, I think it's five. Might be six. If we could. I'm talking about what it's going to look like. It's either slide five or slide six. Yeah, that'll do. Okay, so two things that I want to ask about. One is the rendering is showing the background of trees, which clearly would not occur on the site. So I'm wondering if, if this rendering accurately gives a feeling for what the impact of the development would be from the road based on the, the proposed development of the village behind? Because it seems to me that would all be off-site landscaping that we don't have now and wouldn't have in the future. What do you think? We can ask the applicant as well, but if it... Certainly would change the view if there were no background of natural vegetation behind that, in my mind. Given that this is a scenic corridor and we have an extraordinary interest in the view, this isn't something you do all the time, every time. But are those trees actually either present or proposed at this time? I guess it's a question for staff.
Commissioner Deal, your comments are correct that the, the visual simulation provided here does include the planned retail village and associated landscaping. There are trees in the, on that rear property and may be illustrated, but perhaps not to the density as shown here.
Well, looking at the Phase 1B drawing that includes the roundabout that was provided in our packet as page two, says at 263 of something, I don't know what, down in the bottom right, the, that shows the, the proposed development in the context of the shopping village, and what backs the proposed development in this is parking. There's no landscaping shown on that drawing that's in the, in the vicinity of the proposed project. Am I reading that wrong?
There, there would be parking lots directly adjacent to the subject property should the retail village be constructed. There is also quite extensive landscaping requirements of that permit. So the accuracy of the visual simulation as it relates to the landscaping, I wouldn't be able to confirm at this point. But the, both the subject property as well as the adjacent property are required to be landscaped, especially along the frontage of Highway 68 and Corral de Tierra Road.
Right, but am I making my, clear my, my concern has to do with the view from Highway 68 across this property and whether it is an unobstructed view of the shopping village through the canopy or whether there's going to be trees behind it, as shown in this depiction. And I'm, from everything here, the trees are imaginary that I see. I don't see any way to, to see the trees, so perhaps the applicant can address that. So since visual impacts are so important in this case, I just want to be clear about what the expectation is, and if it's going to be, it's going to look like this, then we need to have some assurance that this is actually going to happen. And I don't have any way of seeing that right now, which also goes to my second question, which has to do with signage. What signage is approved for this and how would it interact with the proposed structures that we see here? Because signage is going to be important.
That is a great, great question. The applicant decided to defer the signage application until later date, so at this time, there is no signage proposed with the project. A separate use permit, subject to the Planning Commission's review, would be required. The only required signage at this point would be a fuel price sign in accordance with state requirements, but there is no signage proposed for the canopy or the convenience market at this time.
Can you show me what, explain to me what are the sign allowances in this corridor that they might potentially implement?
Yes, please give me a minute. Through the chair, Title 21, Section 216110 establishes the sign regulations for projects within a design control and visually sensitive zoning districts, such as the subject property. In the cases where there are more than one establishment exists, such as a gas station and a convenience store, signs would be allowed up to 35 square feet for each use and can be dual-sided, but with the aggregate of 35 square feet. So simply, the convenience store would be allowed to have a 35-square-foot sign, and the canopy would also allow a 35-square-foot sign, subject to the Planning Commission's review.
Through the chair, so there would be the potential for two 35-square-feet signs which would, are not illuminated, or they are illuminated?
Illumination would be allowed, but would, we would have to ensure that such illumination is consistent with the exterior lighting requirements of the 2010 general plan, which include downlit lighting and limiting the amount of backlit lighting from the, from the signs, and that would all be part of the review of the future use permit.
But those are the allowances under which the design would be presented?
Correct.
Okay, and does that include the price gasoline, required gasoline price sign or not?
That does not.
So that would be additional, and that's the standard sign we see with the numbers that light up that you put somewhere near the road?
There will be additional design considerations for the fuel sign. At this time, there isn't a design presented, so it's only that the, the sign may be established, but the actual design needs to be finalized through that future use permit.
Do we have a location?
We don't have a specific location. It would be along either the Highway 68 or Corral de Tierra frontage, but not towards the corner to ensure that this proper line, site distance for traveling public.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is I'm having a little trouble looking at that, and I think that page five was a good example, of understanding what my expectations for what this eventual project is going to look like. So I'm just going to put that on the table, and perhaps the applicant can continue to discuss it. However, it would be in the context of what is actually proposed in this, and putting future elements that are determinate to, off to another date, another hearing, reminds me of the last hearing that we just had. So I really would like to get my head wrapped around what I would see when this project is complete, all at one time, all at the beginning, and that would include, in my mind, at least a visual representation of where signs might be located, what's the, what's the, what's the vision for that? Particularly, as I look at this, the circulation is complicated to get in and off safely from Highway 68. So I am anticipating that there are potentially some signage associated with success So, I am anticipating that there are potentially some signage associated with successfully navigating this circulation so that you can get there. Um, and that brings me to my second point, which is there are some off-site development proposed here. And as part of this, in order to, to implement this project, off-site things are required. One of them is, appears to me to be improvements to Highway 68 that would then go away as soon as we, if or when they do this other roundabout project is, am I, am I correct in that, that those would become obsolete at the moment when they actually get to the roundabout? So, I mean, we don't want to write a condition that you have to have this improvement and then this improvement goes away. I mean, that seems, we should certainly mention the potential for that.
Uh, yes, you are correct that the proposed improvements to Highway 68 would become obsolete should the roundabout be installed, given the, the staff has coordinated with Caltrans on the general timing and it is believed that the proposed project, should it be approved, would be constructed in advance of the roundabout's construction and therefore would be required to implement, um, the proposed changes to the turn lane.
But should that not be the case, then they wouldn't?
Correct.
And does our condition correctly reflect that? Because I don't want to make them do something just for the heck of it. It seems silly.
And that clarity can be added.
Cool. Um, so I guess I'm just back on, on, I'm hoping we can get some clarity around the, well, I just should also disclose for the record that I happen to have an electric truck, so I have a question about that, but it's not really important. But I have, my main question has to do with clarifying the expectation of what this would look like in this scenic location. And I feel as if the application, as it's been presented to me right now, is a little unclear on that point. And so, I'm hoping that we can achieve clarity and should we achieve it, we can record it. So, that's where I'm at right now.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Robert?
I had the opportunity to attend the Luac meeting on this hearing, so I have, have a little bit of information about this project. And I believe the question was asked at the time about the canopy and whether or not that's a requirement, a state requirement that a canopy, canopy exists over, uh, over gas pumps. And I believe the answer is yes. Is that true?
Uh, staff would need to confirm that.
Okay. Um, second, in your presentation, I think I understood that the property immediately adjacent to this property to the west is not in the B8 district. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. I didn't realize that. Then that may lead to my next question, um, which is the findings in several places talk about, in finding six and finding seven, talk about, um, future projects that may benefit in a way that this project wouldn't benefit, that, uh, I think it's, it's regards to the setbacks and that future projects, um, uh, let me see if I can find it specifically. Oh, it's finding, yeah, six and seven. The subject property, due to the restrictions imposed by the B8 overlay and the resulting significantly smaller building area, is deprived of a reason, oh, um, maybe it's just before that. But it's referring to that other, other properties are able to potentially benefit from setbacks that this property is not. And so, I needed, I was looking for clarification on that.
Sure. Um, the light commercial zoning district allows for setbacks to be established through an approved general development plan. That general development plan would look at surrounding land uses, onsite design, onsite parking, and other site restrictions to determine what the appropriate front side and rear setbacks could be. So, the subject property, because it also has the more restrictive B8 overlay, it must require, it must, um, comply with the B4 overlays, side, uh, side and rear setbacks, as well as the front 100-foot setbacks from Corral and Highway 68. And so, other properties, they could, if we take the commercially zoned property just west, it is also subject to, to front 100-foot setbacks, but its side and rear setbacks could be reduced hypothetically to minimal, if not zero, should the, there be justification for it. But for the subject property, because of that additional overlay of variance is needed to reduce the required setbacks of that overlay.
Okay. But I, I completely understand that now. When I read it, I don't think I understand it, understood it, so I'll go back and see what I didn't understand at the time. Um, the, thank you for that clarification. The other question I had was the permit allows for 24-hours-a-day operation of both the pumps and the convenience store. And, um, I guess I'm just wondering, I mean, it seems obvious that the pumps would probably be open because people can pay, you know, without a person being there. I'm curious, maybe the applicant can tell us about the intent for the convenience store and a 24-hour operation in this rural area. Um, and then the last question I had is in regards to the visual sensitivity. The applicant has had this flagged and staked for, it's probably been at least a year now, although I think recently they, they aren't up there. So, the community has had a lot of opportunity to really kind of see what this is going to look like and how it fits in the, in their neighborhood. And one of the questions, my own personal question, is in seeing some of those old photos of the previous gas station, the canopy roof was pitched the same way the convenience store roof was pitched. And, um, I'm wondering if that was something that the applicant considered or whether the county has, had input into the design aspect of the canopy? Because, because the canopy really is the question to me. And I think even in listening to the Luac, one of their questions, they also had other questions about the size of the convenience store. Um, but for me personally, that canopy is kind of the big question. And if we can make it as visually sensitive as possible, I guess that's, would be my hope and goal.
Through the chair. Staff hasn't been presented with any alternatives to the canopy. However, the design was, uh, the applicant is proposing the design at about 18 and a half feet in height to accommodate for larger, larger recreational vehicles that now, um, are often on Highway 68 or Corral de Tierra versus the historical fueling canopy couldn't accommodate those and I, according to the applicant, was consistently hit. So, the additional height is to accommodate larger vehicles that are now on the road. Should a, a pitched design have been proposed, um, I think there, there hypothetically could be some visual compatibility between the two structures, but would again increase the height, the ridge height of that to still allow for a below height of 18 and a half feet to allow those larger vehicles. It would still be within the allowed height of 35 feet for the light commercially zoned property, but may increase the perceived, um, scale of the project.
Thank you.
All righty. Commissioner Mendoza?
Thank you. I think I heard in the presentation that the water usage proposed for the new gas station will be less than the water usage for the gas station that closed in 2002. How many bathrooms will the new gas station have and how many did the old one have?
The interior layout of the convenience store has not been finalized and, and would be upon, um, the property owner getting a tenant for the building. However, it's my understanding that there would be at least one restroom for employees, potentially one for the public. Historically, the water demand was, was in part based on not having low fixture or low water use fixture requirements in the 60s. And so, that has contributed to the, the difference in, um, water demand, even though the proposed structure is getting larger. I don't have the details of whether or not there was a bathroom in the original building, but the property owner may be able to speak to that.
Thank you. So, I read that there's no public bathroom anticipated for the project. And I'm wondering how a 12-pump gas station on a commuter road on one of two main entrances to the peninsula is going to accommodate all of that traffic for 12 cars of gas at once, but no bathroom usage? And I hope that the applicant will address that as well. Thank you.
All righty. Well, hopefully, we'll be able to get that information. Commissioner Deal?
A question for staff. How is water used analyzed if we don't know if there's a bathroom or not? And that's my concern. If somebody says, "Oh, yeah, I'm only going to use this much water, but I'm not going to tell you whether or not I'm going to have a bathroom." And if we say, I, I share the concern about bathrooms. I'm old. But that's just following on Commissioner Mendoza's comment. And then I wanted to go back to the off-site issue because I forgot about the shed. I'd like an explanation of the proposed development on the next-door property that appears to be the shed relating to this development. And, um, what's up with that?
Uh, there is a proposed trash enclosure with a covered trellis, um, proposed on the adjacent property, which is planned for the retail village. It is subject to the planning commission's consideration today and would require a, um, use permit and design approval, given the underlying, or sorry, administrative permit and design approval, um, given the underlying zoning districts. So, it is part of the proposed scope. It does meet required, um, setbacks for accessory structures and would not affect the allowed lot coverage of that adjacent property.
Through the chair. I, I remain a little confused because the adjacent property has an existing plan, right? Is this in that plan?
It is not. The location where, um, the, the trellis and trash enclosure are proposed was slated for a parking lot. And so, the project would slightly modify some stalls of the planned project. But the interior layout and parking layout of the adjacent retail village allows for the flexibility of moving around stalls.
Yeah, and it's just we're not considering the adjacent property. So, when they say they're going to have to move stalls around, we're assuming that by doing, if, if this is a necessity of the project we're looking at now, then we need to have an agreement that someplace, the county says, "Yeah, you, you can have that. You continue to have your trash there. That's where the trash is going to be. We've got a agreement with the adjacent landowner that that's where the trash is going to be." However, if it impacts the other property, we don't have the ability to say, "Well, do they have plenty of parking? And if so, are they moving this? And if so, you know, is, is it still going to have enough?" And, I mean, that's an existing plan that we're not looking at. So, at any rate, I'm just a little puzzled about, again, since I don't know what it looks like, and I'm hoping the applicant can help us, what we, what we're approving. If we're approving something on adjacent property, normally, we would get some kind of agreement or easement or some kind of a thing, in the remote eventuality that these properties would be under separate ownership at some time in the future. They're, they're fully separate now in terms of technically.
Correct. And through the chair, there is a reciprocal parking and access easement conveyed over the approved interior access or, um, parking lots and access improvements on the adjacent lot. So, with the concern of potential change in, uh, future ownership, that existing access easement would allow for, uh, the access to the subject property to remain as well as other improvements done.
Okay. Okay. But, you know, you're looking at, the only way in and out of the gas station is through a good bit of the neighboring development. So, it looks to me if I was going to want to get to the gas station from Highway 68 going west, I would need to go to take that first entrance to the north part of it on this map. If that's north, I never know on these maps. And I would go past the parking stalls and then pass other parking stalls and then over along the side of the large building down to get to the, way to get into the gas station immediately before I got to Corral de Tierra Road. That's through a good bit of that parking area. Um, and those are not looking like major roads. Those are looking like lines between parking. So, the circulation as it appears without the shop, the, the neighboring property development and the suit, the, the access as it appears with it seem puzzling to me. I, I'm continuing to puzzle about that. Which gets me to the bottom line of, these projects are obviously actually in the real world related. And we are only looking at this piece of it. And so, I want to try to understand what it is reasonable for us to look at as well. If you look at the, the access drawing without the shopping villa, it looks much clearer than it does with it, to me. So, I, I'm, I'm still puzzled about that.
All righty. Very good. Commissioner Mendoza, did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I was going to make a comment. In reference to the canopy pitch, having a pitch roof opposed to a flat roof, in most cases, they end up putting solar panels up there. So, if you have a pitch roof, you, they would be very visible. And that's the way they offset some of their electricity use, for say. So, that's why they'd rather use a flat roof than a pitch roof.
Thank you. All right. Seeing further questions? No, don't see any. All right. Thank you, commissioners. Would the applicant or the applicant's agent care to make a presentation? Just give us your name, please.
Good morning, Chair Getzelman and members of the planning commission. My name is Eric Phelps. My family has owned this property since 1974. I wanted to clear up a few items that, that came up during the discussion before I get into my little presentation here. The, the design that we saw in the rendering, on the right of where the canopy is, is that big oak tree, the two big oak trees that we saved as part of the village process. There was a total of, I think, four big mature oaks that were saved during that process. There's also a, quite a big, large hill behind not only this gas station, but the village. And there are a lot of trees on that hill that you would see looking past this gas station, even the village. The village, there's only one two-story building within the village. So, that hill is very dominant backdrop to this, to this property. That is a rendering. It's not perfect, but that big oak tree that you see to the right of the canopy is, is there and it, and you'd see it. There was, uh, about the signs, you know, the tenant, there's going to be tenant requirements. We don't know what that tenant's going to require today. We're not hiding the ball. We're just not wanting to commit to something much like the hearing or the, the thing just before this. We don't want to promise something and then change it, right? We don't want to show you something and then the roundabouts come in and that changes our sign plan. So, we thought it'd be best to have all the facts, know what we're doing before we present that. Uh, the, there was something else, precious, uh, water closets. Okay, toilets. We plan to have restrooms in this. We have to have restrooms in today's C-stores with, with, within a gas station. Uh, we, uh, the previous gas station had a women's bathroom and a men's bathroom. They all had the older fixtures. We use, plan to use the waterless urinals and, uh, water-saving in the new bathrooms. But they would be for the public. They would be clean. They would be for the customers and they would be used. Improvements to Highway 68, that's really dictates from Caltrans. These driveways, no property owner ever wants to give up driveways. We have four driveways, two on Corral, existing and two on 68. That was all done by Caltrans and Public Works that came up with the design of access, 24-hour operation. If the use is there and the people are using it, then it'll be open. That's really going to be up to the operator. If it's not being used, then they would critique those hours to see what the use was. The canopy, we did look at, I mean, we spent, hopefully, you appreciate the design that we came up with, but this design took years to come up with. And in the, when, a part of the canopy, creating a pitch was just something we looked at. It only creates the height to be that much taller. And so, we did the best we could to give enough height so that it wasn't getting hit by RVs and trucks, uh, but yet to, to keep it minimal so it was, you could still see the C-store, see the two-story building within the village and the big, beautiful mountain with trees in the back. So, I, uh, and, and that's it. I think I answered most of your questions. If I didn't, uh, our Laney's attorney, Matt Francois, will, will answer that. But, again, my family's owned the property since 1974. I live in the Tor area. I've raised my family here and I understand what a special place it is. As, as a result, we're very excited to be here to present this project for your consideration. I want, uh, I want to start off, uh, sorry, it's been 50 years we've been working on this. I want to start off by expressing our sincere thanks to county staff, particularly Fiona. Her knowledge, her professionalism, and diligence was deeply appreciated by our entire project team. Next, can we get the slides up, please? Sorry. A little nervous. Okay, we'll go to the, that's, okay, background. This corner of Corral de Tierra Road and 68 isn't just another commercial parcel. It's a place with long history of serving this community for decades. Am I doing something? Okay. This site was home to the old Exxon station and market. For generations, neighbors stopped here on their way to work, to school or the ranch. It was quaint, familiar, deeply woven within the rhythm of daily life. What we're proposing today isn't a new commercial use. It's a return of what was always here, but done thoughtfully, carefully and in a way that respects the rural landscape and the community identity. The fueling station market was originally approved by the county in the 60s. Where remediation was required, we cleared the site, remediated the soil and prepared it for this moment. The tanks were removed, environmental approvals were completed and the property has patiently waited for compatible, low-profile development. The proposed project mirrors the original use. A convenience market, same number of fueling positions, a simple rural design that blends into the setting. This isn't a modern highway stop. It's a neighborhood station built with board and bat, baton siding, earth toned colors, alone, low canopy and landscaping that softens its presence along the scenic corridor. Next slide, please. This proj, next slide, actually. One more time. This project design also ties directly into the Corral de Tierra Retail Village, approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2012. The village was envisioned as a neighborhood scale center serving the Toro area residents. This gas station site has always, was always vision. It shares access, circulation and design language. So when both sites complete are complete, they'll look and feel like one cohesive rural village, not a strip center. All lighting will be warm, low level and shielded. No harsh glare, no spillover into the scenic corridor. Structures are pulled back, screened and scaled down to fit with the land rather than dominate it. We, the trash enclosures were brought up. Those originally were in front and as part of the planning and trying to get out of the 100-foot setback, we placed them behind the building just to preserve that rural feel that you get. Commissioners, this property has been a family dinner table discussion for us dating back since 1974. My brother Tony, my sister Wendy and her husband Mike are in attendance today. Mike and Wendy have lived in Toro area for 35 years. Now both their children and six grandchildren live in Toro Park. From day one, our family has committed to bringing something generations of our family and neighbors can be proud of. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our land use attorney, Matt Francois.
Thank you very much, Eric. Good morning, Chair Getzelman, members of the planning commission. My name is Matt Francois and I'm the land use attorney for the applicant. Just to follow up on some of Commissioner Deal's questions. In terms of the, Eric was correct that the tenant hasn't been identified yet. So the signage will be subject to a separate future planning application. But if you, in the plan set, that's in Exhibit B in the staff report, on the cover sheet, it shows the proposed location. It's highlighted or outlined with a box there for the wall sign for the tenant. So we don't know who the tenant is, but the location of the sign is identified on the cover sheet. And then on sheet EP 1-0, somewhere in that same packet, it shows conceptual locations of the fuel signs at the corner of the site and a potential monument sign at 68 and Corral. Obviously, all that would have to be reviewed by your staff. Subject to a future application, make sure that it's consistent with your high design standards and line of sight requirements. I also wanted to answer the question about water in the Witson Engineers Report, which is Exhibit H to your packet. When calculating the water demand of the prior use, there was a note referenced there that the existing station had gallons per flush toilets. So those assumptions are factored into the analysis there that is reflecting that existing station. And I'm happy to answer any other questions as we work through. If I missed any that weren't addressed by Eric, I want to make sure that we address all your questions as we go through the presentation. And Fiona, if we can get the previous slide, please. Going a little backwards here, but Fiona did a great job. So I'm not, I'm going to try to not cover this in great detail. But this, just to emphasize that this site has been planned and zoned for commercial uses for over 50 years. It was never identified as an open space parcel. It was, this, this commercial designation was, goes back to at least the 1982 general plan and was reaffirmed and re-adopted in the 2010 general plan. And that, the commercial zoning, of course, allows for convenience markets and stores and service stations. So the, of course, because we're consistent with the zoning, it does require a use permit for a gas station use. The county previously granted a use permit for the Exxon station. But the applicant's not asking for a zone change or a zone amendment or anything as drastic as that. Instead, he's trying to fulfill the land uses the county has planned all along and of course, in a way that respects the land, the views and this very sensitive and important neighborhood. Next slide, please. So Eric showed you the slide and you have seen the visual simulations. The project design is architecturally compatible with the retail village as well as a semi-rural and natural setting of the Toro area. You can see that through the earth toned colors and the clean, simple board and baton design. Fiona talked about the changes that were made to that design in response to the LUAC's good comments. Just to highlight too, that while the zoning allows for a 35-foot tall building at its peak there, and the roof is 25 feet, so 10 feet underneath that highlight. And then while a 0.5 FAR or 50% coverage would be allowed on the site, about 14,000 square feet of development, this project is coming in at half that, half the allowed amount, 25% or 7,000 square feet. So we think we're trying to be very sensitive, consistent and compatible with the development standards that exist. Fiona did a great job of talking about the lighting and how it will be carefully designed to be downlit, not spill off the site. And then even the canopy lighting will have cutoff features from dusk to dawn that will shut off and only be activated if a car is in the area. So again, trying to demonstrate a sensitivity to this, this visual corridor and making sure that the development fits in with it. Fiona also discussed, and I said I wasn't going to repeat, but here I go, that the, there were plenty of discussions and I'd really like to thank Fiona and staff, Armando too, for leading those discussions with Caltrans staff to ensure that the project would be compatible with the future hybrid roundabout designs. And Caltrans has gone on record in writing, we submitted comments on their EIR and they confirmed that these designs, the fueling station designs that you have before you are compatible with their future development plans. Next slide, please. So we believe the project provides several community benefits. It provide, it'll provide necessary goods and services that do not currently exist in the Toro area, thereby reducing vehicle miles traveled. We talked about how with the modern water fixtures and less water for landscaping, it'll reduce water demand by about 30% compared to the prior service area. No significant traffic impacts and then that thoughtful rural scale design. But don't just take my word for it. Next slide, please. The, the project does enjoy broad community support. There, you have at least 18 letters, I believe, in your packet as Exhibit L of various members of the community, each individualized letter demonstrating why they support this project. And we believe that that's compelling here, that it's, this is a convenient located gas station along our route home and would greatly reduce unnecessary travel, save time and ease congestion in other parts of town. That's a Caracholi's statement on this. Rodney Meeks says, this is a project that reflects careful planning and investment in our community's future. It'll generate local jobs, increase county tax revenue and ensure that fuel and essential goods are more readily accessible in emergencies. We appreciate the comment from Mr. Hoover that it may be one of the most attractive stations in the entire county. And we didn't pay him to say that, but we're appreciative of that nice comment. And Margot Daniels has talked about the vis, the aesthetics of the project as well and how it'll fit in with the neighborhood shopping village. And then Rick De Cerpa, the project will enhance the convenience, character and overall livability of the Corral de Tierra area. And last slide. So in conclusion, we believe the project fully complies with the county's planning and zoning designations. It's been carefully designed to be compatible with the Toro area and adjacent retail village development. It has numerous community benefits, which I've discussed. And so we respectfully ask for your I vote. And if possible, I'd like to reserve a minute or two for rebuttal after public comment. But in the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, Commissioner Deal.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the presentation and I agree, it's been cussed and discussed for decades. That being the case, what I am most concerned about is because of its extreme visibility that we set the expectation for what the eventual project will look like as clearly as possible now, because the public is better, deals better with things that don't surprise it, in my view. So can you point me to a visual simulation of, we have here on Figure Sheet A 1.0, a series of viewpoints of the existing site. And we have seen simulations that include the convenience store. But the overall picture of what it looks like with the canopy, with all of the ancillary structures, I'm not finding. Can you point me to some indication of what it will look like from similar viewpoints to the ones shown here? Once everything that's proposed has been implemented?
And Commissioner Deal, you're correct. There's not one visual simulation that shows the entire development. When the retail village was approved by the board back in 2012, there was a series of conceptual elevations that showed the design of the retail village. I have one in my packet, but I don't have one, because they weren't entitled at the same time, I don't have one that shows the entire complex, but I can show you.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I'm not talking about the retail village. I'm talking about this particular project, which has a canopy in front of it with pumps and the gas signs. And so that, I didn't mean that, I'm sorry.
That's fine. No, no, I apologize for misunderstanding. There are actually two visual simulations. I forget which exhibit it is to your staff report. So there's that close-in one of just the convenience market, but there's also a visual simulation of the entire development, of the entire fueling station development.
Maybe staff can help me.
Yes, through the chair, I believe Commissioner Deal, you're asking for just what the proposed project will look like absent any planned development of adjacent properties? Is that correct?
All I'm looking at is from the points that we have outlined, that we took our views on for the existing situation, what's the gas station complex project that's before us today going to look like? I mean, we know there's going to be additional background. We just, I don't have, none of them have the canopy on it.
It's Exhibit M of your staff report are the visual simulations. And there, there are two of them. And the first simulation shows the canopies.
Okay.
On this, on the screen before you does illustrate the canopy.
That's the one I want to see. That's perfect, thank you. I'm sorry to be so dense here. And there will be some signage associated with that in the case of the convenience store, similar to the outline within the area that's been designated or thereabouts and something similar on the canopy for the gas station?
That is correct.
Okay.
As well, and here's also staking and flagging photos that commissioners may have seen if they've driven by the property site in the last couple of years. You can see there is dense trees in the background that will partially be blocked along Highway 68. And then along, if I can find the other photo, along, when you're coming eastbound, this is the view from just entering into the intersection. You can see the canopy here as well as the ridge of the convenience store in the background.
Understood. I'm just worrying about the fact that the cover sheet could be interpreted as not showing the whole project. And I don't want to hear that come another day. And especially with questions like signs and lighting and all of that jazz. So this is the sheet I wanted and I would apologize for not actually finding it and encourage its wider dissemination when we're talking to the public. Because that's the one that most closely provides an idea of what to expect. Thanks.
Thank you. Just one moment, sir. Commissioner Monsalves?
Thank you. Just one more question after all that. Is this image that we're looking at Corral de Tierra Road or is this Highway 68?
That is Highway 68.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Commissioner Roberts?
I have a question for staff and potentially the applicant's representative. I had also read somewhere that the bathrooms were intended, maybe it was an older document, intended for employees and hearing Mr. Phelps' statement that it's for the public. And honestly, the preliminary operations plan says that there's bathrooms. It doesn't specify for public or private. I'm just, my only question about that is whether or not staff and applicant's agent believe that that was considered in the water calculations as a public use?
Rich Witson, our civil engineer who prepared the calculation, who can confirm that? But yes, I'll let him speak to that. And just to, to your point about public versus private, if the plan wasn't clear, our intent is that they're public. If the plan needs to be amended to make that clear, we're happy to do that.
Good morning again. Not talking trees now, but water. Yes, they, we use the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District's methodology for estimating water use, which includes both the convenience center and the gas station and the number of pumps. So both Monterey Peninsula Water Management has factors for both those uses and they have an outline to say, you know, when you have two use on a single property, you combine those use and that's how we came up with our estimated water use.
And again, just to clarify, the bathroom is being calculated for public use?
Yes, that's factored into the gas station per pump number. So based on the number of pumps, they estimate an expected water use based on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, thank you very much. The conditions then are okay with you all? The conditions for the project?
They are, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right then, this would be the time for public comment and we have a few referrals that we'll take first and then we'll open up to the general. Mr. Mike Weaver? Oh, Mr. Weaver, three minutes, please.
Yeah, can I get the overhead on first before my three minutes start?
Yeah, we won't, we won't try to do that, do you?
Alex, could you please share the overhead?
It's pretty. It was there, I saw it. Cavalry.
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical, technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later.
This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up.
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
I had this, I was like, oh no, now it's kicking in. I was gonna turn it on later. I don't want it to wake me up. I'm gonna get an easier-
Those of you listening on Zoom or on phone, we're working on technical issues at the moment. This is a good point then to take just a quick break while we work out these technical issues. If you'd like to, let's take about three or four minutes and do this. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Oh, here we go.
Just give us your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Tamara Schwartz, and I am on the Toro Luac Committee. And first thing, I want to make a comment. I appreciate the change of colors of the building. That was brought up.
Just a moment, excuse me, Ms. Schwartz. Are you speaking for the Luac, or are you speaking for yourself personally?
For myself.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I just want to make that comment. I appreciate them working with us on that. My concern is definitely the signage, and if there's a franchise going in, which I'm assuming it would be, that there is probably some type of requirement from franchises as to the size of the sign, or if it's backlit, or whatever. So that would be my biggest concern of, you know, what company is going in, the aesthetic value of it, and also, you know, I'm hearing concerns about the well water, and that's, I'm very concerned with that as a, you know, somebody that lives in the Toro Park area, and I appreciate the beauty of Highway 68. And I think that, you know, hopefully that we can come to some type of arrangement where we can maybe even downsize some of the gas pumps, because I see that it's pretty big undertaking there, but I'm concerned about more so the aesthetic part of it and also the toxins in the well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, I'm sorry, sir. I know, terrible, huh? You get one, we get one shot, but you did a great job. Is there anyone else in the auditorium? Sorry. Anyone, anyone on, online that would like to comment?
We have no emails or no hands up on Zoom. Oh, I'm sorry, we just got one.
Oh.
Yeah. Mr. Stump?
Mr. Stump? You're live. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Stump, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
All right, thank you. Yes, I also have concerns about the size of it. I think the proposed station is three times the size of the previous station, and the application seems like it purposely misled to state that there were 12 pumps, when actually there were just six with 12 nozzles, but only the ability to serve four vehicles at a time. So as stated before, Mr. Phelps, the station is not similar in size as the original, and this is going to be serving 12 stations and is a huge increase. The Highway 68 scenic corridor is going to be definitely impacted by this tall 24/7 brightly lit structure, which is in direct view of the road, and not the usual 100-foot setback or any trees masking it. The trees behind it aren't as important as something in front of it, so that it would mask it. The other two stations on Highway 68 are essentially not even visible from the highway. There's no store needed. There is a station and a convenience store just across the street, and it's a thriving market, so therefore, the convenience store is not needed. And the new owners of the gas station across the street is planning to reopen that existing station that was referred to as Mario's Station before. Plus, there's another gas station at the Toro Park 711 that is only three miles or six minutes away, so there's really no need. And if there was a need, the previous Exos Station, which only was servicing four vehicles at that site, would be open today if the demand was actually there. I also really feel that the environmental impact report must be done, given the size increase of this and with the contamination that is noted already here. So that needs to be done, and there really is no reason why the gas station can't be reduced significantly in size, put behind the 100-foot setback, and be much more hidden from the scenic visible view. Thank you, and I wish you'd reconsider going ahead with this size of a project and make it more compatible with what the rural area really is and why we all moved here to have a rural setting without a gas leak station in front of us every time we drive by on Highway 68. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Madam Clerk? No, seeing no one? Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, applicant's agent, if you would like, you've got a few minutes here to talk about that.
I appreciate that, Chair. Just to briefly respond to some of the comments, first and foremost, the old gas station had 12 fueling positions. This station has 12 fueling positions. It is true that the C store is larger than the old C store. That's largely a result of the need to have accessible aisles and bathrooms, which didn't exist in the 60s when the old structure was built. In terms of the overhead perspective that Mr. Weaver had shown, that wasn't an architectural drawing, obviously, but he was indicating that there were 20-foot tall canopies. This project is 18 and 1/2 feet, so it's less tall than those canopies. And also that that convenience store and real estate office and service station were within the 100-foot setback. This convenience store is completely outside of the 100-foot setback. There was a reference that no environmental review had been done. That's not accurate. In Exhibit C to your packet, there's a 135-page, carefully-prepared environmental checklist by the county's consultant. Not, we paid for it, but it's not a consultant that we had any influence over, that fully complied with SEQA and the law by looking at your general plan EIR and determining whether there were any peculiar impacts. That approach has been reaffirmed by our legislature, by our governor, over and over again, that SEQA isn't supposed to generate paper, it's supposed to analyze impacts. So if there aren't any impacts, document that and move on. It's been reflected in two, at least one recent California Court of Appeal decision in 2024 out of San Diego County, where the court actually ruled against a board of supervisors for not relying on the exact checklist that your staff is telling you to rely on here. Let's see, in terms of the hazards, and that is obviously a significant issue, Mr. Phelps talked about how the site had to be closed down, the tanks removed and cleaned up. Exhibit J to your packet, which was not mentioned by the speakers, is actually the case closure letter from the regional board indicating that remediation and corrective actions have been completed and no further action is required. So again, that's not something, this is the agency tasked with hazards, making sure that those are cleaned up, and they've signed off on this. And of course, we'll need further permits before we can do any grading or movement work to make sure that that's still the case. Let's see if I had anything else. The signage and the comment about the franchisor wanting perhaps, or franchisee wanting larger sign than your county codes require, that is a nonstarter. Any franchisee here, unless, you know, they're asking for some extraordinary variance, which you would have complete discretion over, will have to provide you signage that complies with your sign requirements. So that is just the rule, and they will have, they can't do anything other than that because those are the county code requirements. We do believe that we've, we've talked about how we've tried to carefully design this in accordance with your code and the retail village and the sensitive location, and I would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Staff, I, do we have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Nope, looks like you're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Staff, Ms. Jensen, did you have any final comments before we move to discussion?
Yes, I want to reiterate that the, as just mentioned, the regional water quality board case has been closed to the standards acceptable to the state, as well as local environmental health bureau had monitoring wells on site to ensure that soil and groundwater investigations were completed and up to par with local and state requirements. Environmental review has been completed in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, and the proposed project before you, staff believes, qualifies for a statutory exemption. The proposed project, regardless of the prior gas station, is developed at a scale that does comply with the light commercial zoning district requirements, and as noted prior, any future signage is subject to a separate discretionary permit, including design approval review, and staff is happy to incorporate that language into the draft resolution to add extra clarity and/or condition that the project, any future signage be subject to a use permit as our existing code already requires.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. You can, I think you can probably add that language. I don't think anybody would be unhappy with more clarity. All right, Commissioners, let's bring it back up here. Anyone like to start? That would be Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to speak from having heard a lot, thought a lot about this project for, as I said, decades, and heard from the community about it for decades, and I would say that this is the least contentious hearing about this project I remember attending. I would also say that issues and concerns raised here are not substantially different than those I have heard in the past, and those have been processed through a great deal of administration over a great many years. So only some of this is really something I feel is, is being heard, I actually don't think much of it, except the design is being heard for the first time. The specific design of this project is, in its details, new to me. The idea of it is not, the location of it is not, the setting of it is not, the underpinning policies are not. So given that, I really respect the public process that's gone on, and I have historically made my concerns known about the larger situation over a number of years, and my views did not, in most cases prevail, and I respect that. And I think that this is a good faith effort to do what we now have said is supposed to be done, and when the time comes, I would be happy to move approval of this project as presented with the changes presented by staff in their errata and the additional condition that we have just discussed.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Mendoza?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, okay. I guess you made a motion, Commissioner Deal.
Who knew?
Yeah, not me. Commissioner Roberts?
I echo Commissioner Deal's comments. I also struggled with the original project, just for its size and scale and basically everything everybody has mentioned today, but the applicant has spent decades, literally, getting to the point that we're at today, and I also will support this project as it's proposed. I do have a question, though, for staff, going back to the findings, that I just felt, maybe with clarification, I will understand a little bit further. My concern in the finding six, finding six evidence B and finding seven evidence B is similar. One sentence says, "If deemed appropriate, these and other commercial lots may be developed with minimal or no setbacks." And there's another sentence kind of similar to that. And I understand, based on the presentation today, what was suggested. My only concern with that is it almost feels like we are preapproving a project that it doesn't exist. And so I understand the intent of that language, and I think it's important. I don't know, I would like, I would like it to read in a way that doesn't look like we're preapproving a project that doesn't exist. And I don't, I'm not positive how to do that. It's that sentence, and then the sentence in evidence B in finding seven that says, essentially, if appropriate for the specific site, a 1, 2, or even 0-foot rear side and setback could be authorized on another LC zone property without the granting of variance. Again, I understand it's showing that a similar property may not need a variance in the same I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to get around what.
I guess a question I have, is this something that you would like staff to work on, perhaps with, to refine the language here? Would you like to incorporate in the action that staff work with county council to try to refine that language so as to not read as pre?
I'm completely fine if staff works separately with county council to resolve that language. You may find that it doesn't set a preapproval for another property, but that one, in reading it, for me, I was concerned in both those situations.
Okay, we'll do that, then. All right, Commissioner Deal?
Just saying it's fine with the maker of the motion.
Okay, wonderful. Then, unless there's someone else, the, okay. We have Commissioner Shaw.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm just going to maybe the outlier here and say that I think it's a really pretty building. It looks lovely, but looking at this independent of the other develop, proposed development that has yet to be built, I do think this strays quite far from the rural character and scenic drive on 68 that I'm used to seeing. I think it is bulky. I understand the setbacks and the need to reduce them, but I just, everything else I see on 68 is screened very well, and this is not. I think the canopy is, is a lot to look at. I think that it's just, in my opinion, too much, and it's not something that I can, this design that I can support at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ain't no one else, then? Let's, let's have a vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
I'm sorry. Those kind of blended together. Do you guys need a roll call vote? No? You got it? Okay. I believe it was two nays, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Montzaviz. All right, very good. Thank you so much, everyone. Motion passes, so the project will move forward. All right. Madam Secretary, are you going to talk to us about the referral packet? Or not?
I have nothing to add, other than a reminder that I have gone through and highlighted or bolded new updates or changes in that referral matrix. Should the commission have questions or comments or concerns?
I notice you got rid of my referral. Does that mean it's been completed, or does that mean you just got rid of a thorn in your side?
Can you remind me? I am positive it was completed, but could you remind me which referral that is?
My co-chair will remind you.
Telecommunications?
Cell phone towers.
No, that should not have been removed. If it is not on the list, that was simply an error, so.
I thought you were just trying to tell me something.
No, still on our work plan. No.
All right.
So if it is, it was inadvertent, and I will go back and ensure that.
Just to punish you, then, how about a department report?
Well, I feel like that's more punishing to you all. Oh my gosh, please excuse my apologies. I went from focusing on that last item intently to forgetting to jot down my notes that I wanted to share with you all, so I think.
Nothing to share, I think you have nothing to share, yeah. You can just put it off.
Thank you, thank you. No, the one, the one, just significant update I did want to provide to you all was, yesterday, staff did present a status update on the housing element to the board of supervisors. In that meeting, the board of supervisors reaffirmed support to continue forward with, with the proposed approach that staff is taking for responses, and so we are continuing to be responsive. We will be having, we will, in the coming month to two, we're targeting to have both an updated third submittal to the state, which would have a seven-day public review period prior to formal submittal to the state, and then also, we are working on our public draft of our programmatic environmental impact report as well, and hope to have that public circulating by the end of the year as well. So that is the main update I wanted to provide. I mentioned earlier that the board did have a new referral with regard to emergency moratorium on battery storage while looking into potential for local regulations, and that will return within 30 days for a preliminary response to the board. I'm sure there are other things, but that's what I've got for you now. Thank you so much.
Just one quick question for me. The board referral on battery storage, commercial or private? What were they, where were they thinking? Were they thinking commercial?
If you will allow me, I would like to pull that specific ref- I would like to pull that specific referral up, which is what I had intended to do.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was going to impact, you know, people putting battery storage in their garage or if it was intended to be like Moss Landing.
It's intended to be more commercial scale, but I'm not positive it had specific definitions. It was not intended to regulate individual, personal, private.
Well, I don't want to brought it up, and I'm now running us long. So what I'll do is I'll go look it up, if you would prefer, and answer my own question.
I can work with you.
Okay.
And we'll answer it.
So others of us might be interested to know.
What's that?
Others of us might be interested to know the answer to your question.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chair, while she's looking that up, I wanted to point out that she does still have the telecommunications, wireless communications.
Is it on there?
List, yeah.
Really? Where'd I miss it?
Page, yeah, it's the bottom in small print. No, I missed. It's page two of six, number four.
My apologies, then. I apologize.
Happily accepted. And I did want to, let me just read the language. It is specifically, a referral title is, "Urgency Ordinance Adopting a Moratorium on Battery Energy Storage Systems: Best Facilities in Unincorporated Monterey County While Regulations for Best Operations Are Developed." So those battery, battery energy storage systems are not individual, private home.
Yeah, not private.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Sorry I kept everyone longer than...
No, I have a question. I'm going to keep them longer, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a quick question. Any idea how many builder remedies, project, welder's remedies application we've had at this point, given the housing elements timeline?
So yes, as a matter of fact. One thing I will say is that the number of builder remedy applications that we have has changed over time because, because we still do not have compliance. Some pre-applications that were placed in which their six-month or 180-day window to submit a formal application has passed. They've not resubmitted. And some of those may still be in the works, but just nothing formally. Also, there are a few properties where we have multiple applications. So I did just look yesterday. We do have, at this time, seven properties that have, on our records, active builder remedy applications. Some of those properties have multiples, such as 7-Eleven Viejo Road has multiple applications, as does Oak, Oakshire, Oak Circle in Carmel Valley have multiple applications still.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Questions before we go? All righty. Then we will adjourn the meeting at 12:07 PM. And thank you, everyone.